Okay, it is 6:30. I ordered the Planning and Zoning Commission for April 19th, 2003.
Twenty-three.
I'm sorry, 2023.
That was a while ago.
It was, 2003 was a while ago, wasn't it? So, it's been a long way. All right, if we could just do the roll call.
Yep. Mr. Harriman?
Here.
Mr. Swink? Not here. Ms. Carney?
Here.
Mr. Adler?
Here.
Mr. Jesswicks?
I'm here. All right, we're into approval of the minutes. Planning and zoning commission meeting from March 5th, 2023. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve is submitted.
Second.
Okay.
And that's March 15th.
Correct, March 15th. March 15th, yes.
Yes, sorry. Sorry, Tyler.
We had Tom and Jody. Ms. Carney?
Yes.
Mr. Adler?
Yes.
Mr. Jesswicks?
Yes.
And Mr. Harriman?
Yes. All right, we'll move over to the Planning and Zoning Commission work session. Approval of the minutes from April 3rd of 2023. Got the year right this time. Do you have motion for that?
I will also motion to approve as submitted.
Second.
Mr. Adler?
I'm staying.
Mr. Jesswicks?
Yes.
Mr. Harriman?
Yes.
And Ms. Carney?
Yeah.
All right, move into communication. I'll start off Planning and Zoning, Mr. Hutchinson.
I'll keep it short tonight because we've got the big agenda. Coming up, we have, we will soon be seeing a plumbary for the spot. That's the commercial outfit out there on Perry Pike. Also, Virginia Holmes should be in soon with the plumbary for Beechey Farms. We also will have a, probably look forward for Madison Meadows, sub-area B. That was the, to be originally the apartments section. They will be coming in with either an amendment or a new plumbary for that section. They're going to go to townhomes instead of the apartments. Still going to be private section, but obviously the density will drop in that one. So, that'll come forth here soon for review as well.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Any, just to ask kind of follow-up, I know the zoning code stuff. Any, I know you, when we met, what on the 3rd, I think you just got the revision.
Yeah, so went through, OHM sent us the, sent us the, his draft. It's very limited. He is recommending that we group all the PUD sections together. So, instead of doing a PIC, PRD, PCD, just doing a PUD with all the sections underneath that. So, there's no bouncing around which is which. So, I've sent him all of our discussions from our work session to add those in there to see what that looks like. I think we're getting close. I think we need to, definitely need to look at the design standard section of that. And we're not too far off to getting something drafted, a complete section for that. Then, once that comes in, we definitely need to look at some of the commercial regs and sign regs after that.
Okay. Thank you. BCA, Mr. Jesswicks.
Our meeting last night was canceled. There were no applications, so we did not have a meeting and haven't had one in a couple of months now.
Good. All right, here, Carney.
Yes, I attended the John Moller High School freshman projects. They had to come up with, like, a problem that they see, whether it's in the high school community or some, some type of problem that they see that they want to have fixed and then come up with a solution to that problem. So, very interesting to hear all of the different dynamics from athletic lighting or lighting on the softball field to adding in agriculture education courses to the high school. It was really neat to see those projects. I'll keep mine brief as well. Talked to a resident this afternoon about the speed limit on 42. Just kind of education to the community about where our jurisdiction is, is important. But talked about that as we are going through different annexation processes that we can petition to ODOT to decrease the speed on 42. So, that was kind of a little bit of the education process that it might take us some time, but we do all want to just decrease the speed. So, we don't go from 50 to 35 in town. And also, I know staff is working on the West Avenue 42 pedestrian access. We received a grant, I believe, Mr. Hutchinson, is that correct? For, to create kind of that pedestrian access across.
Yeah, on West, yes, at the intersection West and along 42.
Yes, so very excited about that as we are talking about the western side of Plain City being developed and, and how do we get from one end to the other? So, that is all I have for this evening.
So, Mayor, or Mr. Hutchinson, with that grant, and you know, we've talked about, obviously, in this committee about infrastructure improvements, especially right along that roadway at Perry Pike. Are we planning for road widening as we spend those grant dollars? Is that something that we're able to do, like on Perry Pike side especially? I would hate to see sidewalks be put in and then a year later, we tear it all back out to where we need.
We are, everything is just, I mean, there's not even, yeah, there's not even, the engineer has just looked at the project as far as a whole, but yeah, it hasn't even, I think it got to the point of inch down.
But will we be talking about that?
Yeah, okay.
And in that same conversation, also discussed about Darby Station. How do we get the, those residents to the uptown and being able to have like that walkable community? So, that is something that, as we know at the forefront, as developers come in, that it's important to have those conversations upfront. So, just sharing that as well.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Anybody signed up for the public comment?
Anybody here, just in general, public comment tonight?
Okay. Old business, it's like we're all, no notes on that. And move us over into new business. So, first item on the agenda, PZ 23-2 at 360 North Chillicothe Street. Be a rezoning of approximately 9, .92 acres along the west side of North Chillicothe, approximately 0.41 miles north of the intersection of Main Street and North Chillicothe from the neighborhood district B1 to a community business district B2. And we have the applicant here, Mr. Dawson, and open for public comment with that. Okay, seeing that nobody stepped up. Mr. Hutchinson, if you want to.
Yep. So, what we have here, most people are probably familiar with the old gas station site there on North Chillicothe. So, there is a total of two parcels there, 354 and then 360 North Chillicothe. Both those parcels are zoned B1. And let me, I can pull up the map for you. I did send that in the packet, but I'll bring it up here for everyone to see. It is the only, it is the only B1-zoned parcels in that area. So, right here is a current, this is the current zoning. So, the PRD across the street, that's the Ronan Hoffbauer Preserve. Obviously, the green space is, is our park. B2 directly across the street there is, is our zone commercial. And then we have the three types of residential there to the, to the south and southeast of that. I mean, this is, these are primary definitions of spot zoning. Just why, I don't know when that lot ever became zoned B1. It could have happened while the gas station opened. It could have happened afterwards. For whatever reason, it's zoned B1 and B1 does not permit a gas station. Applicant, Mr. Dawson here tonight, he does have, does have a client that wants to open that back up, clean it up and everything. So, a B2 zoning, which would accept the gas station use there. And this is what the, let me pull back up here. This is what the map would look like with the rezoning. A little more consistent with the B2 across the street. Looks a little less spotty as having the B1 there. So, it just, it just makes, it just makes sense. If it was as simple as going through, doing a lot of cleanup zoning, this would have been on the list, probably as a, as a cleanup item, just because that B1 did not make any sense why it was there.
And the property just, I guess, south of it, or to the right, I guess, however you want to look at it, is that just kind of like a donut property that's not even?
Yep, that's in the county, it's not in the village. It's one of the little isolated islands there.
And, and just for clarity's sake, the, the, the gas station, so it's zoned B1. That's not a permissible use, it's not a permitted use. So, it's not non-conforming, it's just not permissible at all.
That's great.
However, it operated as a gas station for 50-plus years, right? Since the decades, at least.
Yep.
It operated basically, it, it non-compliant with the zone.
The only thing I could think of is whenever years, whenever zoning was put in place or maybe the zoning code was changed, it was just grouped in a lump of this is this and we're going to put it in B1. That's the only thing I can make sense of why that was zoned B1.
And Mr. Harriman brought up the property to the south that's unincorporated.
Yep.
Is, are there plans, I mean, I know historically, you know, we've talked about, you know, trying to remedy a lot of the islands, both from a, I mean, obviously from an incorporated standpoint, but also the zoning standpoint, which would kind of go hand in hand. Are there any discussions with the property owner about that? Or are there any methods for us to, you know, try to address these little islands? And there are several of them that exist around that.
Yeah, no, there's not discussions with the property owners yet. I mean, of course, there's, there's, we would like to clean that up. I mean, there is, there is definitely, follow-up, you could touch on the legal matter as far as what we legally can and can't do with some of these, you know, we have, we have a handful, we have quite a few of those little pockets. I mean, what are options if they, as right now, if they don't want to annex them, there's, there's not much we can do.
Right.
I don't think there's much we can do at this moment. Not without, you know, legal action to make it conform. Most of this should have been taken care of back when the original water and sewer service were originally provided many, many years ago. It shouldn't require it because it's required in our code.
Yep.
But at this point, it would be difficult, tall order to go back and do that.
So, out of curiosity, if there were a sale of the property, would that trigger any sort of a, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty messy.
If they chose at some point to, if they came to us and asked, would we envision it being zoned B2? I mean, you know, kind of that, that flow would be?
Yeah, it would be, because I think what's there is just, is it just a pull horn kind of style? So, yeah, I guess it'd be whatever that proposed use of that building would be, would be. And ideally, it would either just be right into that R2A or the RS2A, I can't see from here. But either do that residential, residential use or if it was going to be a commercial use, either one of those would be the best choice. If they were offering something else for use there that'd be outside of those two, we would, we really would need to look at what we want to do with that because I would not want to, and you know, just, we'd be in the same boat as we were with the gas station, just having an oddball zoning district in there. I think either one of those two zoning districts would probably work for it, just depending on what they want to do with it.
I mean, I don't know exactly what Mr. Dawson has planned. I know that he wants to go to a gas station and maybe some sort of a, a little convenience store with it. And I, again, I can only speak from, you know, history. There was a carryout across the street, there was a gas station where he is at. Both of those were, you know, fairly busy and they were utilized, you know, by a lot of the park. People who utilize the park, whether that be the campers or whether it be the baseball association, you know, people, a lot of people going in and out. It would be a, it seems to me like a good opportunity to, you know, to reopen that and provide that business opportunity for that, that section of town that's seemingly underserved.
Yeah, plus we'll have the 100 new homes right across the street there. So, it will, it will definitely be utilized.
Mr. Harriman, do you mind if I talk, I know I've passed?
No, no, oh, perfect. Yeah, no, I was going to ask you if you wanted to.
Yeah, I would like, I would like to just, you know, I know that Mr. Hutchinson's already said that it's been a gas station since 1950. One of the other advantages, I have a hammock that it's a subsidiary of BP. Doesn't have the traffic count for a BP station, but does for a hammock. That's red, white, and blue. I don't know if we're going to share any images, but I'm going to open it up personally. As a gas station and a convenience store there. First we want to do is get the gas station open right away because in my opinion, it has been an eyesore for this community. I, I thought, well, Pioneer Pizza was the biggest one and then that was the second biggest one. And unfortunately, I have on both. So, this is going to be the next eyesore. That will be taken care of because they're VPing the whole entire building and redoing all the gas pumps and everything there in the canopy too. But along with that, because we, Derek and I have very long discussion about the cabins and about the house, we're also going to be demolishing all of that. And it will be truly a B2, a decent green space. And maybe it will be something that will be really nice for the baseball team or something to stop by if we expand and do something up commercial that's right there where the house and the cabins are. So, that's, that's like the end goal eventually, like five-year plan is to have either an ice cream place or maybe even move Pioneer Pizza there because it's so hard to get in and out of in the downtown area. So, that's what the goal is.
No, yeah, it'd be nice to see that area get fixed up. I mean, I just, little comments, just as you fix it up, just, you know, the buffering, kind of just that, that back corner where it bumped up against the, the neighborhood area, just, you know, be mindful of, of that. And then hopefully, some of the plans are pedestrian-friendly, like sidewalks and different things to be connecting up through the, the park or, and connecting, you know, going south, you know, to, to town. So, that way, we have a little more connectivity for everybody to come up Main Street instead of having to dodge the cars coming.
Yeah, I love that idea. And again, this is where it becomes problematic, having it an unincorporated area right in, in between them because we can't, if it's not annexed, we can't force them to install sidewalks or to do anything else that's, you know, in, in our interests as, as a municipality. I mean, that's why I asked about, you know, are there plans to, you know, try to convince these other property owners on these little islands? I mean, you know, Mr. Dawson could go and spend, you know, $100,000 putting sidewalks and whatever and to go nowhere. It's going to go to now a gravel lot because that's what it is. And then maybe meet up with another concrete sidewalk, but, you know, a wheelchair or whatever couldn't get from point A to point B. And it's, and that's where, you know, those islands like that, I, I mean, they're, I understand, you know, what Mr. Lafayette said, that, you know, it should have been addressed back in the day. It wasn't, but I, I just don't feel like we should just say, well, we didn't do it back in the day, we just can't look at it all. And I think there's, I think the village has an interest in, you know, making sure some of those things start to get cleaned up at some point. And again, I don't know the, you know, the method to, to get there. But anyways, I, I think your point is, is a good point. But it also, if I'm a developer of that property, I'd be reluctant to go and spend $100,000 or whatever the price is on sidewalks that can't and won't connect to anything. But I do think it's necessary.
Yeah, I think it's necessary.
That's an excellent point because on, I'm there doing work, there's people that walk on the road.
Yeah.
Trying to do there all the time.
Yeah, trust me, yeah, I jog up through that way all the time.
And if we're being honest there, you know, if, you know, obviously that backs up to, to pastime park. And if Mr. Dawson, and I've seen it too, people do walk on the roadway, but it would be a great opportunity to have a cut through at least into the park.
Yeah, not necessarily to get in for the campers or even for the ball fields to go through.
So, some sort of an entrance or a path into the park. Now, whether that ends up being, you know, turned into a, you know, like a walking path at some point or not, might, you know, that is debatable. But at least a path into the park would be good instead of forcing them out onto the roadway like use indicated.
Do you know the condition of the storage tanks?
Yes, we've had them tested and they, what they do is they go down and just test the coating around them and the coating is good. They said anywhere between 12 to 15 years left on those tanks. So, they were replaced approximately eight or nine years ago. I believe Buster looked that up and they said that they were replaced. So, they should last on a good, you know, 10 to 15 years.
Okay.
I like the idea of taking down the cabins. I think that's a really good positive improvement for the community.
Anything?
I'm good.
So, I mean, I think ultimately, this just really makes the zoning match what the building's been for, let's just say 50-some years that goes back.
Seventy, 1950, right?
1950s, no, 70, 70-plus years?
Yeah.
And it was almost in continuous operation just until a couple of years ago, when Tobin sold it to Mr. Dawson. Well, I guess he, he sold it to Joe before that, but it was, that was short-lived.
Did we close the public hearing portion? That's all I just wanted to make sure.
I guess we open and we close it, but yeah. Guess we'll officially close the public hearing portion now.
I move to approve PZ-23-2.
So, I count. Okay.
Mr. Jesswicks?
Yes.
Mr. Adler?
Adler, sorry.
Yes.
Ms. Carney?
Yeah.
Mr. Harriman?
Yes. All right, thank you, Mr. Dawson.
Thanks, Tim.
All right, next item, MSD 23-2.
Parcel on 301 to 305 North Avenue, a lot split there.
So, what we have here, we have a 1.73 acre lot, residential lot, RS3 there on North Avenue. And the request is to split that in two. What I'll do is I'll bring that up here. And we do have the applicant here tonight. Mr. Tripp is here in the audience. So, what we're, what he's requesting tonight is, so there is, is two options. Both options meet the zoning code. So, as a condition, if, if, if the, if the commission is good with the, with either option, a condition would be, if approved, that we would get a copy of that, of that survey, how it's going to be split, the actual survey is going to be submitted to the county for the lot split. Just wanted to verify, but this is, this is the original lot. This is as it is today. It has three separate buildings on it, which is a, my world's a zoning nightmare. But, but it happens, it happens all the time. You know, it's something that, whenever these structures were put on there, there was no regulations, only number of, of houses that could be put on there. And so, this is what it looks like now. And we have option one, which will be, we have a little lag here. A little lag on the connection here. Why that's bringing up, TJ, if you want to come up, if you have anything to say. The applicant, like I said, is here. I'll try to get this.
I really don't have anything except for just to highlight, as, as Derek has said, excuse me, Mr. Hutchinson, has said, this is non-conforming right now. So, two things, A, that allows me to obviously have two different ways that I could actually sell that lot into the, in the future if I choose to do so. And just being able to essentially, I can just use my finger there. Essentially splitting off this single-family house right here. So, we've got single-family house, single-family house, and duplex all on one parcel. I have some theories on how this got this way, but that's not for this meeting. But, so essentially sectioning this off and having it within the current zoning compliance keeping the frontage and the setbacks on the side and to the rear. And then essentially just being able to, now that turns into within the zoning, A, is now we're both not out of zoning conformity. And, and B, just allows me to be able to do something with that in the future, whether sell one side or the other and not have a B. Someone else being so daring to take on such a project and make a random parcel like that.
So, looking at, it looked like there's, so there's two options. So, like I said, the one was kind of like that one building and it looked like, I have pulled up here, but option two is kind of basically the opposite of the other side with the, what'd you say? The other single-family and the duplex?
Exactly. It's basically just where am I keeping the additional land with it that goes in behind? I mean, most of it's floodplain back in behind there. But essentially, I just want to be able to kind of split it whichever way, whether I'm keeping the land and keeping the three northern units or selling the land with the, with the little single-family houses essentially the biggest thing. But the biggest thing on the back end was just essentially allowing for the split. If it was just the house, I would just have it be enough room to where it's still compliant to be able to have a garage detached or attached is the biggest thing and not turning that into a variance nightmare for you guys in the future for whoever owns that in the future. In case you didn't catch my drift, as I'm trying to stay within the rules.
Appreciate that.
So, basically, we're just vote, we are not choosing which way to split the lot. Is that correct?
Yeah, both options, both options fall within the zoning code once permitted. And, and, you know, I think discussing with Fred that there's, there's advantages, I think, either way he goes. He has some ultimate goals that one way may make better sense in the long run. So, yeah, so the, if approved tonight, you would approve either/or with the condition that once, once it's chosen, I'll get that final copy prior to it being submitted to the county for, for recording.
I, I guess that's kind of the, the question I would have. And I don't know if this will, you know, it's like, either, can we approve either/or and then let staff decide? Is that, I, I mean, I just, like I said, I mean, I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure we're doing everything correctly.
You'd want to be approving a specific option, whichever one he's going with.
Okay.
That's what needs to come to the commission.
Do you have a preference of which?
Yeah, let's just, I'm expecting a choice here tonight.
I mean, we could also table, right? I mean, we could just up next month and give you some time as well.
Well, what we could do is even if, please correct me if I'm wrong, because even if something goes after speaking with some parties after, after this approval, if something goes kind of haywire afterwards, they say, no, that's not what I envisioned at all, you know, I would probably say, let's vote on this option right here and just keep sectioning off the, just the single-family home.
I guess what I could propose, you know, because the application was for either/or, right? I mean, you could, if the commission is fine with it, vote twice. Vote once to approve option A, vote again to approve option B. Just because we approved something through the commission doesn't mean it's going to happen. We have approved, we've approved developments and haven't been developed. So, so I guess we could do that. Then, what I would say is, once you make your decision, then you note your election to Derek and then I would recommend that you withdraw the other application just so we have a clean up records. I think that's probably clean is what I do.
And here's option B, just, or option two, in case you didn't get to see. This was a little bit bigger, that would incorporate these two together, this one individually. The other option would, would lump this one separately, on the smaller parcel, and these two on the larger parcel. Either/or meets the zoning code.
I'm going to kind of view this similar to what we just saw on the last application, right? Is we're taking something that's outside of our standards now and bringing it into something that actually fits. So, I mean, I don't have any major concerns with either. No, I mean, and I just wanted to ask kind of approving the either/or. I wanted to make sure we were, you know, good on it. So, I mean, I don't have.
I, I do have a couple of questions and I, and maybe you've answered them because you said it is, it fits within our zoning. But, so a, a couple of things. One is, so we've obviously got one non-conforming lot right now. And we're going to create two lots. Are both of those going to be conforming?
Yeah, you're allowed in, in this residence, you're allowed an accessory dwelling on these, on these parcels. Yeah, you're allowed, in, in this residence, you're allowed an accessory dwelling on these, on these parcels. And either way you go, this is, it meets the square footage with those two, and the setbacks and everything.
And the, the lot coverage sizes and all that, so all of that would be met. So then my other question was driveway access requirements. So it's really hard to tell from this, especially with the, you know, the tree, you know, kind of obstructing, but I looked at it on Google Maps to look at the front of the, the property. And when you pull up, basically right in the middle of those, there's a driveway straight back to the duplexes. But it's not really separated, I mean, it's not like it's a designated driveway that just goes back. It's shared by the house to the north, the house to the south, I don't think shares it and just parks out front.
No, and, and TJ, correct me if I'm wrong, that he is going to put an access on, on this one here.
So on the south side of that home, there would be some sort of the driveway access?
Yeah, because ultimately, and correct me if I'm wrong, this driveway would actually access the rear lot too. So it will go, it will be the driveway for this, and either way, either that option or option B, the driveway could be added right here. And then this driveway would remain being the shared for these two, as it is now, and then this one would have a.
So it'd be nice to get rid of the front parking and, and just be able to have just a driveway on the south side of that house, and just make it plain and simple, just to have a B access there. And that was also directed to make sure that driveway is asphalt in the future, because that'll be, do the zoning cuts back. So I had my marching orders. Yeah, and, and so like with, you know, from a public safety standpoint, you know, especially when you have homes that sit back off the roadway and they're kind of concealed by the two front. You know, you have that one driveway, and then, you know, it, it's like, okay, here's the two houses on the road, but I don't see the house that I'm looking for. Because that one's off to the back, so, I mean, a- again, and I don't know exactly from a signage or a identification standpoint, but I, you know, would like, as you go through this process, to, you know, be able to clearly delineate, you know, the, the drives or the access to each home, so that when, when Mr. Adams's crew is going and looking for a medical emergency or whatever there, it can be easily identified. So when you have shared driveways, it makes it difficult, and obviously when you have multiple dwellings on one piece of property, it makes it difficult, so. That would be one thing, and I don't know exactly what the process or the path is, but maybe Mr. Hutchinson can give you some direction there. But, you know, tho- those were the concerns I had, was just driveway requirements, because it, it feels like there's basically one driveway to all three properties. You're gonna create a, basically a second driveway for the southernmost property, that's great. And then that still leaves one drive for the other two properties, so finding a way to delineate those, I think would be advantageous for, you know, public safety as, for one, and then just the, maybe the post office for another, or the pizza delivery guy, you know, whatever it is. So those issues. And then like, I also wondered, and it's probably out of the purview of, of this, it's, it's really probably a concern for you, but when you talk about sectioning off the, these, these properties, these lots, do there have to be any easements that are created? You know, like especially with the shared drive on the north side property, you know, is, is there, does there need to be an easement that's?
Not fun, in, in from my background in easements, which I have spoken too much about easements in my lifetime, but, so with me having essentially owning one parcel, like an easement would only need to give access to another parcel, so you're granting, so if I was to have an easement from the back to the other, I'd be granting an easement permission to myself.
Currently the owner of those, but I'm saying like, once you do your lot split and split, and you've talked about doing, you know, selling, maybe, maybe the back half of that, depending upon the way you are, I mean, would, would there need to be, I just, you know, consider that in the future. I don't know whether it becomes, and I don't think it's an issue today.
Yeah.
I don't think it's an issue when you do this, but if in the future you go.
I wasn't thinking of the right, the same way that you're saying, saying that now. Yes, no, that would have to be something I would have to take into consider on the, on the north, for the northern properties, if that was an access to the back, but I don't, there's really no way for me to develop the back section either. So it would just be who's mowing the grass, you know, and that's about, about it.
As far as an easement, you can handle that when it comes to, if you chose to sell the property, that would be a condition of the sale.
Right, yes.
Have to exchange an easement with you for, for managing the driveway.
And obviously I would do that far ahead of time before in the middle of the sale or something like that, but yeah. So it's much easier for me to clean up when I have ex- ownership of both parcels.
Those were the only comments that I had, sorry.
Good. Thank you.
So per Mr. Lafayette's suggestion, I would be okay with voting for the option A and then option B?
So do we need to do a, I guess a vote for, for both? Option A and then do a vote, so?
Yeah, so MSD twenty-three dash two A and two B. Does that work, Mr. Lafayette? Okay, so I would make a motion to approve MSD twenty-three dash two, option A.
Second.
Mr. Harriman?
Yes.
Mr. Jesswicks?
Yes.
Mrs. Carney?
Yes.
And Mr. Adler?
Yes.
And then secondly, I would make a motion to approve MSD dash twenty-three dash two, option B.
I'll second that.
Ms. Carney?
Yes.
Mr. Harriman?
Yes.
Mr. Jesswicks?
Yes.
And Mr. Adler?
Yes.
And then just as a condition of those, make sure that, you know, you follow Mr. Lafayette's advice or guidance there, and you communicate with Mr. Hutchinson in relation to which option you choose, and then withdraw the other.
Nope, that sounds good. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, next item, we have PUD twenty-three dash four, Madison Meadows two, final development plan.
And, so yeah, so we got here again, we got Madison Meadows two, section, let's see, it, it consists of four sections, total of seventy-nine point seven three four acres, with a nine-acre park space, two hundred and twenty-five residential units, fifty-six detached petty homes, and a hundred and sixty-nine single-family dwelling homes. Preliminary plan that was approved, planning permission in November twenty-one. Really, the only changes on this were the, two of the retention basins did have to be relocated and, and joined to meet stormwater management regulations. It didn't change the outlays, the layout of the neighborhood lots, or the streets or anything like that. I think if anything, it may have even increased the green space with that, so that was really the, the, the change that, the big change that was from the preliminary to today.
The catch basins are, like around the pond?
The, the two ponds, yeah, there was, originally there was two, two ponds in the northeastern section, and there's now one. Am I correct, Joe?
So just an observation on that, and, and I would like for you to be able to go through and give your presentation here. But when you join those, you know, like in the existing Madison Meadows, there's two, it seems like there's two ponds, there's supposed to be one, and they're not one. And, you know, there's a ton of, like mud that, you know, is, is in between, so it's, you know, as it drains, it, it seems like it's gonna be a, a haven for the, for the kids to go try to ride their bikes through there or whatever. So I'm asking, you know, when, when you've combined these, what steps have you done to try to, you know, like to mitigate that to, you know, basically really create one pond instead of two half ponds that drain and then create that issue in the middle?
As far as the mud goes, I, I mean, it starts to mature, and the grass starts to mature, and I hope that goes away. And I think there's other improvements coming in the one that you're talking about. For here, it was really more of a, of a question of the, the storm outlet, and that we were able to consolidate it into one pond, and frankly, I, well, first of all, my name is Joe Looney with DMHNT, I should, I should have said that originally, and also Dave Beers is with me tonight with D R Work. One pond is always better than two small ponds. It, it's better for the aquatic life, the, the quality of the water is better, I think they look better, the maintenance is better. You can't always do that, but when you have an opportunity to consolidate ponds, later in the process, as you get your, your topo, and you start doing a deep dive on your engineering, it's something that we, we kind of like to do if we can, can't always do it. I think this one was more of a factor of the storm outlet and getting, getting the release where we needed it in order to make it work.
Yeah, my concern was basically just what you said, one pond, in, instead of joining, you know, two half ponds, right? I mean, I, I just want to see one pond, so there's not a, you know, an appearance of two half ponds when the water's down.
So that's an improvement when we did do that. I really don't have much of a presentation tonight, I think I'd like to keep it short, but what I did do with the submittal, and if you have your mind, the last page, I went ahead and took the original PUD, and then I overlaid and read the final development plan, and then I, I did a little chart off to the side, because, see, to me, that, you know, tonight with final development plan, it's really all about compliance with what's already been seen and what's already been approved. And, I mean, pretty much every time you do a final development plan, there are some changes. You, you have a correct boundary now, you have detail engineering, things kind of shift and, and move a little bit. In this case, the changes are really, really minor. So I feel like we're, you know, where we need to be, yeah, that, that's a good exhibit to pull up. And hopefully, you could see how some of the lot lines might have shifted a little bit. But it's really, really close to the approved plan. Other thing I wanted to mention is, after we made this submittal, we had a discussion with D R Work, and they, I just want to get it on board, they would like to take the section one and break it up into two sections, so there would be a section one A and a section one B. It doesn't change any of the density and the open space counts, it doesn't change anything other than it gives them that flexibility to break that up into two phases. The red is the proposed, what we're talking about. I, I think I just felt like I wanted to get that in front of you guys tonight. So as we come through with our final plats, nobody's surprised. We, we talked about it a couple of weeks ago, you thought this was the best way to handle it, just, we'll talk about it, it's, it's such a minor, minor change, but I did want to get that in front of you guys tonight. Other than that, I'm just, I'm just here to answer any questions.
Yeah, I was able to review all, all of the, the text in, in the entire plan that you have, and it seems consistent with the exception of what you've already talked about, and then obviously the engineer's notes. You're obviously aware of those, and you're working to, you know, conform with those, so. I didn't see anything else, and, and again, other than I wasn't exactly sure where the two catch basins, you know, were combined, you know, what, what you were talking about earlier, but now I'm clear on it, so. Everything makes sense, it's the things that we've talked about and approved prior.
Yeah, I mean, there wasn't, like you said, just really the pond was the, the big change on, on where it's been, so.
And as far as, you know, you know, splitting section one into two, into two sections, I, I don't, I mean, that, I don't see how that's, it got any bearing or relevance for, for us at all. I mean, I assume that this is a, a business decision for you, so you could develop, you know, you know, like one set of roads, and then as those get built and you finish, and you kind of move along, right?
Yeah, and just, the, sales have been really strong the last three months, but it's a pretty volatile market, we don't really know, so that gives them the flexibility to kind of manage their costs a little bit, so, yeah, that's exactly right.
I, I would assume probably sec, part A would be the first one, then go to part B, just?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Does, does it present any issues from, from the, from the zoning standpoint?
No, just an, an extra constru- pre-construction meeting, maybe, that's about it, I mean, there's not gonna be any, any more work on our side.
I mean, and, you know, this flows with what has already, you know, what are the parts that have already been developed? I mean, so you're gonna move in section, or part A, you know, which is like where the sections are already being built, you know, to the, to the south of Leslie Drive. So, I mean, it just makes sense, it flows, right? I mean, it's not, you, you, you're not going and, and putting it obviously over like in a little island by itself, I mean, it's just gonna flow, so I mean, it certainly seems to make, make sense.
And we try to be sensitive too with our phase lines, that we don't create long dead ends, that you have opportunities to turn around and come back without, you know, backing up or having a long dead end, it can be not, not the best thing, so you can see section one has that circulation.
And I did combine the staff reports for, for the development plan and for the plat, because they, they had two separate, it's the same information. When you see that one staff report, that was for both PUD twenty-three four and PZ fourteen.
But we'll have to vote on those separate. Separate, yeah.
With that, I motion to approve PUD twenty-three dash four.
Second that?
Just with conditions of the, the, that the engineer's comments are being addressed.
Yes.
That was the staff report's recommendation.
And I will second that with the staff report recommendations.
Mr. Adler?
Yes.
Ms. Carney?
Yes.
Mr. Jesswicks?
Yes.
Mr. Harriman?
Yes.
And just to mix it up, then I will motion to approve PZ fourteen with the staff recommended, the notes down there.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Jesswicks?
Yes.
Mr. Adler?
Yes.
Ms. Carney?
Yes.
And Mr. Harriman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you. And with that, we'll move on to, I see you combined basically five and six again, so.
Same deal.
We have PUD twenty-three dash five, Darby Station, final development plan with MI Homes. And then also included in that staff report would be PZ fifteen, Darby Station, Phase Three, Parts one, two, three, the final plat for MI Homes.
Yep, so what we have here is a final development plan and plat for Darby Station, Phase Three, Parts one, two, three. Fifty-two point seven nine acres with a hundred and forty-three single-family dwellings. Preliminary plan was approved back in March twenty-one. Phase Three is just about identical as what was approved in the preliminary. And, you know, that's pretty much, you know, at least I can bring up a, bring up the.
Could you, or maybe the representative of MI Homes, clarify the Phase Three is almost identical to what was approved? Can you give us an idea of what that almost is?
Joe Looney, who just spoke, is the one who put this together, so as he mentioned, as you get into final engineering, lines are gonna move, but like, if you look at it side by side, you would know the difference.
So basically, there might be a lot line that's shifted six inches.
Easements now start to be defined, but for all lot sizes, number of lots, all of that's consistent, street locations and all that, so. I tried to find the difference and I couldn't.
I mean, I looked through, again, everything, I looked, I looked through the entire application and see anything that stood out as being different. It seems like, again, exactly what we would, you know, what we've already obviously addressed extensively proved preliminary, so.
Yeah.
This is our fourth and final one, after this one, no more, so.
You don't have to be coming here anymore?
Not twice a month, or every month.
Now, correct me, isn't there Phase Five now?
I don't believe so.
You didn't, okay, I thought, I thought it was broke up, I thought there was that northeastern corner was sectioned out.
I think that's all part of this Section Three that we're in, and we already did four ahead of three.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, maybe there, you're right, there is a five, I'm sorry.
It's very small.
Yeah, yeah, it's small, it just kind of loops around.
Yeah. So, do you know what, did they do that just for, what was the reasoning really, do you know, that was for? Is it just a little squiggly little street that's up there?
It's the northeast corner.
Yeah, it's got the little.
I guess I'll be back. Sorry.
I remember something about that from when this was originally in front of us, and I can't recall what it was, that.
And then there was the, the parcel that's kind of designated on the, on the west side of that property that has not yet come through, right? I mean, there's, it's, you know, maybe set aside possibly for the school district, and if not the school district, then there's gonna be potentially apartments. That's what the initial proposal was.
That's correct.
So there'll be, you'll be back at least two more times.
Well, if, if school does that, then they won't be back, yeah.
They won't, yeah, so.
With that, I, I move to approve PUD. With that, I move, I move to approve PUD dash twenty-three dash five Darby Station Final Development Plan.
I'll second that.
And, and again, that's with the conditions.
Yes, conditions.
With the conditions of, sorry.
And that's gonna be pretty consistent through all these finals, it's just those engineering comments, but just to have it on the record, right?
Yes, on the record, thank you.
Mr. Adler?
Yes.
Ms. Carney?
Yes.
Mr. Harriman?
Yes.
And Mr. Jesswicks?
Yes.
I motion to approve PZ dash fifteen Darby Station Phase Three, parts one, two, three, final plat MI Homes, with conditions from the engineers' report.
Nailed it.
Second.
Mr. Harriman?
Yes.
Mr. Jesswicks?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Adler?
Yes.
And Ms. Carney?
Yes.
He keeps starting soft coming.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. We hit the fin- uh, I wanna say the final one, but I guess the last one on the list here. Uh, number seven, the PUD twenty-three dash three Maran Reserve Preliminary Development Plan with Wilcox Communities.
So, uh, if you all remember, they, they came in, uh, at the last meeting, at the last regular meeting, uh, with preliminary, we did that, that time decided to table, just to do some discussions. Uh, just to recap, this is a mixed residential located, a hundred and thirteen acres along, um, Lafayette Plain City Road. This is the, uh, Wilcox Group, Maran Reserve. Um, so when we were in last time, uh, they took some great comments, some, uh, some feedback, and they put it incorporated into this new revision. Uh, also, our staff and engineer did meet, uh, with their staff and engineers, uh, to iron out, uh, any of the comments that they had from the first, uh, from the first go-around, from the engineering comments. All those were either met, or there were a few of the, um, divergences that will be added into this, but for the most part, they were all, all met and agreed upon, so, um, I think what we got here in front of us now, uh, the reposition of it did drop the numbers, uh, they're at four forty-three, uh, four hundred and forty-three units, down from four hundred and fifty-one, um, which put them at the maximum five dwelling units per acre, uh, and they did add in the, and all of them, the, the G-two plannings here tonight, uh, Gary Smith, so I will bring that up. Gary, are you gonna, you gonna do yours on this one?
Uh, I'm trying.
Okay.
Uh, it's giving me a little more trouble than it gave me the last time, though.
Yeah, mine's been, mine's been a little, been acting up too.
Little hanky as well. We'll see if we can get, if not, I have a thumb drive that I can hand to you, and we can work that way.
Okay, yep, either way, what? Forget, is your, using a lap, or an iPad?
Uh, yeah, I use my tablet, it's what I used last time.
Okay, yeah, I thought it did.
Last time it went just like that, and then, uh, this time, for some reason, it seems to be giving me a little bit of trouble. But, we'll, uh, we'll roll on, if this ever decides to, uh, to get connected, then, uh, you know, maybe we'll go with that, but for the meantime, wait, what's happening?
Oh, it was just waiting on you to hand me.
Something, no, it just went, it just went dark, it's in, oh, look at that! All right, technology, when it works, man, I'll tell ya.
When it works.
Well, uh, I guess I just wanted to start, um, it's good to see everybody again. Gary Smith, G-two Planning and Design, seven-twenty East Broad Street, um, here on behalf of Wilcox Communities. Um, I have with me tonight, Chris Moore from Wilcox, um, and Tyler Jackson from Kimley Horn. Unfortunately, Jonathan had a family emergency, uh, couldn't be with us tonight, had a death in the family, so, um, really wanted to be here, but, um, you know, we'll certainly be available to answer any questions that you have. Before we start, one of the things that I did wanna do, um, you know, Chris and I spent a lot of time kinda working with Derek and Randy, uh, both meetings, a lot of communication flying back and forth, so we just wanted to say, uh, thanks to the staff for all the time that they've given us, uh, kinda working through some of these issues, uh, and responding to some of the comments that we heard at our initial meeting. Uh, we've had a lot of, uh, productive meetings since then. Um, you know, most notably, I think, we, we sat down, uh, about, uh, a week after, I think we met with Planning Commission with both Randy and Derek, went through, you know, all of your comments, all of the staff's comments, and said, okay, what do we need to do to revise this, to satisfy everybody? And so, based on the direction that we got from that meeting, we've revised all the plans. Uh, we think we've taken care of everything that, that staff has given us direction. I, I won't put words in, in Derek or Randy's mouth, so if they feel like we've missed anything, uh, that we talked about, uh, certainly happy to have any feedback from them. But, uh, I just wanted to give you just a little bit of the highlights, uh, maybe of what we've changed. So, the, the, the project itself really hasn't changed itself, um, you know, we're, we're still in three sub areas, but this is the original plan, so if you remember what we came in with, uh, the last time we were here, uh, this is the plan that, that we put in front of you. Uh, and there were a lot of comments, most substantively, uh, in relationship to the change in the site plan, was making some additional connections to the north and to the west, uh, providing some landscaping, buffering, uh, kind of around the perimeter, um, increasing the, uh, open space, uh, to respond to the code requirements. And, uh, you know, just trying to increase, one of the things also that we mentioned at the end of the meeting, was trying to increase some of the connectivity, uh, between the open spaces. So, this is the last plan, uh, this is, uh, the revised plan. So, the first thing that you'll note, uh, is that we, one of the biggest changes in the drawings is we took out this whole section of road, we took out this whole, this whole blank, and we made that all open space. So, we took out that entire street, and we just ran the lots this way, and then we made some additional open space connection between these two open spaces, so that we could connect some pathways up for them. And then we do have our, uh, we do have our connection here to the north, uh, our connection here to the west, and, uh, you know, our connection remains here to the south. But you can see now, uh, how this open space has really become enlarged, and how this all connects up, really up over to here, you know, so that people could get on the sidewalk, come through the open space, uh, you know, get down to different portions of the development, ultimately, you know, sidewalk back to potentially the path. We did incorporate, um, our, uh, leisure trail along Lafayette Plain City Road, uh, as requested. We also incorporated some additional leisure trails, uh, around the pond area, so that, uh, those could really be more wrapped into kinda the fabric of the open space, uh, more usable amenity for the development, really trying to create an opportunity for people to be able to, you know, move and walk around the development, uh, especially for, you know, some of the older empty nesters, the opportunity to get outside, get exercise, uh, you know, becomes, uh, becomes really important. And so, those were really the substantive changes. Um, some of the smaller changes is, you know, we went through and we, we made adjustments to, again, kinda the open space and how that was defined. Uh, we, we, uh, removed some of the, the inconsistencies in the code, uh, or in the text and the drawings, we got all that taken care of. So, I, I think that covers primarily most of the major changes. Um, and at this point, you know, we'd be happy to, I don't know, Chris, have we missed anything?
Yep.
At this point, we'd be happy to just open it up to questions from the Planning Commission, or, or questions from staff, or comments from staff. Happy to work through this.
You, um, and you lined up the entrance, I almost said the north side entrance, with Madison Meadows, is that correct?
Correct.
I mean, like beforehand, it was.
It was, it was still aligned, yeah, they, they were, it was aligned, uh, beforehand. Um, so we, we kept that alignment, from a safety perspective, I think that that's probably required. The biggest thing, I think what we talked about and what you were talking about there, was making sure that we had some pedestrian.
Yes.
Alignment and connection there, and so we do have, we do have sidewalks, uh, that, you know, take you all the way down and can ultimately connect up across the street to Madison Meadows. Uh, we do have our path, uh, on our side of the street to kinda mirror the, the leisure trail on the opposite side of, um, Lafayette Plain City Road. And then we've got some additional ways to kinda connect up and around, you know, to those areas too.
Yeah, I, I remember, uh, the mayor's right, uh, you know, 'cause I remember the conversation was, it's close. Uh, you know, that those aligned roads, um, from Madison Meadows across the street into the patio homes sub-area.
Mm-hmm.
And I just remember us saying, let's not make it close, let's make it lined up.
Yes.
So, that, I think that's what she's referring to.
Yeah, I think, and now it's like lined up, yeah.
The center, the center lines do align, yeah, we're, we should be in good shape there.
I think that was two meetings ago, we had an informal.
Yeah.
The formal was last one.
Okay, okay.
And then I know that, uh, Mr. Swink, who isn't here, he had commented on the, um, more on the patio homes, like in the, um, age-targeted community, that to kinda, that the roof lines wouldn't be all like one pitch, that you could have bearing pitches, I just wanna make sure that's, that's in there as well.
Yeah, the, the, the goal for us is to really to incorporate some architectural diversity, uh, in those patio homes. So, you know, we've tried to incorporate some diversity requirements into the text, just so that, you know, the elevations aren't all the same, vary, uh, roof pitches, or, you know, porches, or those kinda things, to kinda create that architectural interest.
I like the added paths and the additional green space, that really has changed it a lot.
I, I think so, I, we're, we're very happy with kinda the way that it actually turned out. Uh, we think it is a, a big improvement to the plan, and, and, you know, the, uh, the comments have led up to this so far, I think we're, we're pretty well founded.
I'd say, just kinda looking at, it looks like a little better, I'd say, difference kinda, or separation sort with the single-family going through. I think the last time, everything blended, I, and, you know, I don't know, I guess, I know there's some differences. I think where you're gonna go, 'cause those are going private streets on the patio home side, is that still the?
Potentially.
Or potentially.
Yeah, I think, I think we wanna give the patio home developer the option, uh, to do that, but they could be programmed either way, and the way that they're drawn in right now, it could be platted, uh, as either a public road or a private road easement.
Okay.
Yeah, but they would still have, they would look and function the same as the public road, essentially. They would have, uh, the same, you know, the same road width, they would have the, the sidewalks, uh, everything along the street. So, they, you know, for all intents and purposes, they would function just like a public street.
Derek, does the, does the village have a position on that, like what the preference or the choices? I mean, you know, like, to, to, to me, I mean, like, when you say that, um, and you, you look at the, and I don't know if the names of these roads, but the state road in the single-family sub-area, um, if you were coming from the west to the east, and you then get to sub-area A, the patio homes, and all of a sudden, now it becomes a private street.
Right.
Would there be, I, I mean, I, I would have, um, you know, just questions about, like, would that developer intend to put up a gate to separate?
We wouldn't be able to in this case, no, no, it would have to, it would have to maintain that through connection.
And, and then speaking of the maintain, um, our village, uh, you know, Public Works Department are gonna be out plowing streets and doing all that.
Right.
And if, you know, we get up to that part where it becomes private A, it's hard for, um, our, you know, our staff to like, you know, okay, this, our, our maintenance ends right here. Um, so I can just see, like, are, are they gonna end up plowing these streets because it's easier to go around the block?
Yeah.
And, you know what I mean, rather than the, you know, stop in the middle of the road and turn around and go back the other way, it seems a little bit problematic, and then, um, I don't know, I mean, I, you know, I, not, not that the village necessarily wants to assume all, you know, maintenance control, right? I'm not saying that, but, you know, just for the, the flow and consistency and the, and the simplicity of it, I, does the village have a, a stance? Or, or Randy, maybe this is a question for, for you?
I don't, I don't know that the village has a specific stance on it, but my recommendation would be that, at minimum, the state road, which is the north access point.
The road in and through?
The road in, all the way through would be covered. If they wanted to do the loop. Yeah, forward road, I'd say, yeah, that loop would make sense, but yeah, I guess, and like you said, just the plow truck, it'd be easier for them just to go and ride off Plain City Lafayette and just go straight through, 'cause you don't want them to, you know, all of a sudden have a big blade that goes with snow and just, you know, as it works its way, east just stops.
Right.
Right there.
Well, that, I mean, I, I think, Tom, you pointed out some pretty, um, some pretty reasonable practical issues, right, of, of doing that. Uh, and I think Randy's, uh, suggestion makes some sense. Um, I don't see any reason, unless, you know, you can tell me, we can, I think, you know, we would agree to continue work with the city to make sure that those operate as public or private, um, depending on, you know, ultimately where you land.
I, I, it just seems to be that a lot of time, like, I mean, just like, I mean, if we're looking at the apartments, uh, the, the attached home sub-area.
Right.
That's off by itself, that's private, it makes sense, it's like on a little island, and it makes sense just for it to be on its own.
Right, the plow drivers never have to enter.
But when you have to stick this, you know, in the middle of, um, you know, a, a, a road that's connecting, and you said like a through road.
Right.
Um, I, it just, and again, I mean, we're talking about maybe, you know, snowplow maintenance, we might, I mean, you know, maybe some different things. I mean, it's not like it's a huge, like, year-round, uh, you know, issue. And until, you know, and, and again, I don't know, you know, like, you know, for, you know, road maintenance standards, like when the village, you know, you know, gets into, you know, repaving projects, um, you know, like, wha- what if our repaving project is more aggressive than what the private sub-area is, and they're like, yeah, we're gonna wait another ten years on this? Um, I just, I, I just see some, some complications with it, I mean, you know, if it's private and it's on an island by itself, and only the residents are dealing with, you know, only those specific residents are dealing with, um, those particular roadways, um, you know, like, I mean, Country Place is a good example, right? It's by itself, and it's private roads, and they take care of their own things, and they do probably a better job, you know, from road maintenance than what the village does, um, you know, as far as the schedule, like, you know, repaving schedule, they, they, you know, they, they actually seal the roads and stuff, so.
Right.
They, they stay, you know, more on top of it, and maybe you guys would on this as well. But I do have a, you know, concern of it going the other way, and, you know, and it not being consistent with what we're already.
Yeah, and I think, I think that makes a lot of sense, and actually, I think Randy's suggestion made a lot of sense. And I, I would imagine that the, whoever the builder of the patio homes, um, would probably kinda see the same logic in that, because my guess is, um, they're gonna be looking at, from the standpoint of their buyers, um, are gonna be looking at, well, okay, am I maintaining a road that other people are just driving through? They're not even just driving to get to one of the patio homes in the area, they're driving through. So, it may make some sense to keep that road public, um, and allow the loop road to be private if they wanted to do that as a private street.
And, and the village wouldn't be opposed to accepting, well, they're being built to our street standards, so if, if those, all those roads in that patio home sub-area were to be built and be offered as public, I imagine that.
And that is, that is one of the requirements, that the, the private roads have to be built to the public street standards. Yeah, I think it's definitely something that we can continue to work to resolve as we go through the process and go, you know, final engineering and those kinda things.
I just have one comment, Chris, Wilcox Communities, my thought, my recommendation would be, patio homes, state road is gonna be public, have that use for that area, have public roads, other than the private just be in section A.
I, I a hundred percent agree with that.
It does make sense to split it up into that same easement.
What, what is the, um, what's the intention? Why, why, what, what would be the desirability for the sub-home A to be private?
Really, really, it's just a flexibility in marketing this to different builders. Everybody, every builder has a little bit different way that they like to kinda go about, uh, these projects.
So, they could say it's a private community.
Yeah, we just didn't wanna, we just didn't wanna, yeah, we just didn't wanna pigeonhole ourselves into being able to go to different builders and say, you know, we, uh, this has to be all public streets, we don't like public streets. But, I mean, if it makes more sense to do that, then that's, it just is what it is, and, you know, we'll accept that and move on.
And, and in reality, you say, you know, you don't wanna pigeonhole yourself, which I appreciate, um, but have you had experience where, you know, that's been like the, a deal breaker for a developer, where they say, yeah, I'm really, really interested in this, but it's not, not a private road, so we're gonna pass?
It depends, uh, I mean, it, it becomes a deal breaker in cases where, you know, the rest of the project may be marginal, you know, for, for a builder. I, I think out here, with the demand, the desirability of the community, everything else, I, I don't see this as really a marginal deal. I think this is gonna be a very successful project, and I, I don't think that, that, um, you know, a deal with a builder is really gonna hinge on whether it's public. Because again, the, the street standards are the same for public and private, so it's not like they're even really saving a lot of money, uh, by going to private streets. So, I, I can't see that being a deal breaker in this case.
I can only speak for myself, but I agree with Chris a hundred percent, so.
Yeah.
I'd be shocked if you're hard pressed to find a builder out here that would wanna take it all.
I, I don't think we'd have any trouble, I, I really don't.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, like you said, I think the main one being public is, makes complete sense at that point. I mean, you're only talking a, a, a little loop, I don't know why.
Might as well do it all.
You might as well just do it all.
Yeah.
Section A is what's important, us to be private roads, 'cause we have a little bit of a different feel with the community.
Complete sense.
Try not to have public roads back, uh, detail with the curb guard and everything, so, and separate off by itself, mainly.
And, and I, I see you have the emergency access. I mean, get this as something that we talked about, but you have it designated or delineated there. What does that look like on, on a state road?
Yeah.
Where that dumps out. I mean, obviously it's not a full fledged road. It's gonna be an emergency access.
It's gonna be a paved access. It'll have an apron, but then, you know, we'll have probably a temporary bollards or emergency bollards.
Yeah, the deal that we like is a walking path down the middle that's eight feet wide. And then we do grass pavers on either side that carries the fire truck. So it looks like a walking path, but a fire truck can drive through it. And then you put collapsible bollards over it. Then that's moved to municipalities with some success. Looks like a walking path basically, but functions as an emergency access when needed. And you can put some signs and say that on the collapsible bollards.
Mr. Adams?
Definitely options. I mean, it just don't matter how they, how they lay it out. So, you know, we would look at whatever's submitted. Make sure that we have the access we need.
And we, and we can make, we could provide whatever details the fire department needs to make sure it meets load ratings and, and everything else. We, we work with the fire department and Randy and make sure everybody was comfortable that fire trucks are gonna be able to get through there safely.
From a day to day standpoint, it adds another level of connectivity throughout the community and an emergency function for them.
Yeah, because there's, hopefully and probably not gonna be that emergency that's, you know, that's gonna necessitate that. So having an everyday use is, is, is a great idea.
Yeah.
Mr. Adler. You've been ominously quiet tonight.
Yeah. No, I mean, I, I can certainly see where a lot of the feedback that we've given over the last few months has been taken into account, right, and applied here. When you talk about the access to different green spaces, the connectivity to different areas, you know, and then of course, along the roadways, right, the paths there and multi-use trails. So I, I mean, I don't really have any major callouts or concerns. I think most of that's been addressed. I'm aligned with, hey, the patio sub area should probably just be public roads, right, along with the single family. No concern from my perspective about the, you know, the apartment sub area or the, the homes up there being private. It's completely segmented off, so. I know some of the discussions that we've had, just development wise, you know, is the road shape, you know, given a little. It's hard to tell because it's pretty limited on that, you know, we, you know, we've just, you know, Mr. Hudson and I have kind of met. We're like, oh, it's kind of nice, you know, just here in town like land and just a few little S curves. Just shape the road a little bit, just visually gets rid of that.
Right.
That straight shot, you know, just more, I guess, more on the, I don't know if it's on the south then as much. You got a little bit of a chute there, but it's kind of like that north end, just that straight one. You know, that's, I don't know if there's really room to, to bend it.
I, I think we can a little bit. And I mean, I've, I've done that before. And, and we did that kind of a little bit in Madison Meadows, the original portion of that too. I mean, ultimately what it's gonna do is just gonna eat a little bit into the open space there in the middle. But there's the opportunity to kind of shape that. We make the lots, you know, on the, on the north side, you know, just a little bit deeper in spaces. I, I think we can do that, you know, as we go through the kind of final development plan process. If, if that's something that the, the village wants to see. I think it's easy to incorporate that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would agree with Mr. Harriman. I think that makes a big difference and.
Yeah, and I, you know, we, we try to, to do that a lot. What we're really trying to do here is just trying to incorporate as much open space into the middle, but we're not talking about a lot.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we really need to wiggle it, you know, maybe 20 feet one way or the other, just to, just to give it enough so that, you know, it's not a straight shot through. And that, you know, that's always our concern too, is, you know, making sure that the community feels safe. We're not giving people really the feeling that they can conveniently speed through the neighborhood, those kind of things. We're always focused on that as well. So I think that's, I think that's good feedback.
Realistically, I mean, that the, the length of that road is not, it's, I mean, you're, you're.
No, I mean, it doesn't look like it's that.
I mean, we have about, I mean, I'd say maybe 24 lots that go across there. I mean, just, you know, trying to look at that. I mean, it's pretty close.
I mean, you're coming out of a curve right out of the patio homes anyway.
Right.
Correct.
It's, it's, it's pretty limited traffic and, and, you know, right now it doesn't go anywhere. May, it may not extend to the west.
I mean, I guess, the only thing, I guess you could, I mean, there's a connection at the, the end, you know, I mean, so I guess there's a potential that obviously that would be.
Could be extended.
Could be continued. So, you know, as we said, we look at it right now and go, well, hey, it's not that long. But.
Sure.
Obviously, if there is a connection next to it now, you know, whatever it is, 1,500 feet to that, whatever that number is. It's like all of a sudden now, that can be another 500 feet longer now, so then you have that longer stretch, so.
Yeah, so we, we'll just have to keep that in mind with that, whenever, if ever, if ever comes that in, that likely it's gonna have, whatever stepped out there is gonna end up happening.
Well, again, we can, you know, we can have this discussion at final development plan again too. Cause there is, I think, some opportunity to introduce a little wiggle there, you know, if we need to. There's some room there.
I'd almost prefer to keep it the way it is and preserve the green space.
So are the, the sidewalks, the walking paths that are shown throughout the, you know, basically where you removed the, the one roadway and, you know, whatever, all the green space in the middle, what are the walking paths? Are those, I mean, are we looking at sidewalks?
They're asphalt, yeah. It'd be asphalt paths.
And then, and number one, I appreciate, you know, the, the amount of green space that you guys have created with this. And I, I love, I really like everything that you have there. The only like one concern with this, you know, layout that I, you know, that I kind of have is when you have those walking paths, I mean, I would almost like to see, you know, those be able to punch through to yet to be developed property, right? So that, instead of leaving the walking path, you know, getting onto a sidewalk, taking the sidewalk down to that next thing. But I'm, you know, also, you know, at least cognizant of the fact that, you know, you don't want to sacrifice any more lots to, you know, to, to create that. I don't know if there's room to, to pinch lots, you know, like, again, if you're looking from the south.
Cut down here?
Yeah, I mean, like if this were to come through for future development here, or even on, you know, to the west.
Right.
You know, if one or, you know, one of these, you know, is able to come through that way for connectivity in the future without actually leaving that path.
Yeah.
Leaving a path, finding a sidewalk or, and I'm not saying finding a sidewalk, it'll obviously dump out to one, but.
Right.
It almost just seems like, but then on the other hand, you have to cross the street to get there. So I mean, I, I don't know that it's, you know, I, I don't know that it's necessary, but like when I'm looking at it, it's just like, you have all these nice little paths and they can go through and then they go to nowhere. Then I think to like Darby Fields, you know, there's talking about connection. Mr. Hutchinson mentioned Virginia Homes and they've talked about making connection from that proposed development into Darby Fields to their walking path.
Yeah.
And I like the idea of that. This plan to me doesn't leave room for that. Cause there's gonna be a house built in, in, in the middle of those, so.
It is, it's a little bit.
My suggestion might be that we, that we would use a section of sidewalk.
Just make it, make it wider.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna suggest the same thing, cause this, this house really is, is probably gonna, ooh, that's, that's a wide. Probably a big, that wide. This house, this house is really gonna face this direction. The driveway is gonna be out here. So it probably makes some sense to make this piece of that, you know, wider and make that a path. And then go through, and then when you connect up in some of these other places, you know, we've done that before where, again, you know, here at the corner, we could make these paths, you know, you're gonna have to cross the street anyway. And then that way, we're not, we're not really impacting the lots at all. But we are getting kind of a path width that connects up all, to all the other paths. You know, for us, it was really about making sure that we could also make that connection in the middle so that you could get, you know, kind of throughout the development. But I think that there is definitely some opportunity to maybe, you know, realign this a little bit so that, you know, this comes down, you know, goes down that way. And I, I think we could easily do that, make those connections without really having any impact on those lots whatsoever.
Yeah, cause like on the, if you look on the east side of that, down where the, where you guys don't actually own the, the, the property, it's still the homestead. If, if you look down there, there's that connection into the empty lot. What, what is that reserved road?
Which one? Down where?
Basically right in the middle of your screen.
Right here?
Yeah. So, you know, you have that walking path there and that could, I mean, if anything were to be developed on that, you know, the, the people that own that property there, if in the future that was developed and I could see that path easily being connected across, you know, to, you know, whatever could be developed there in the future.
Yeah. Well, this, this is an easy one, cause we could just, we could just do a adhesment.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Like I see that opportunity there. I don't necessarily see the opportunity on those other areas.
Right.
But again, I'm only.
The north and the west are a little harder. You can maybe see something going south, cause you've got that connectivity to, to Lafayette, you know, potentially down there as well. But yeah, I think your point's well taken.
And I would just kind of maybe continuing, maybe the, on the, that south road, maybe a little wider sidewalk, just on that front to get to the pass. You know, cause if you were, you know, cutting through, you know, it's like if you're the one, you might, I'm just thinking, is the runner. It's like, you know, you kind of maybe jog through the middle.
Right.
And then, you know, if you get out just a little bit on the main boulevard, I guess, if you want to call it boulevard, but the main entry road there, just a little wider sidewalk just to lead you back in.
Right.
We've, I, I know we had some discussions about like traffic studies, is that?
It's, it's in review. We'll probably have comments within the next day or two. I don't think there's anything, etcetera, you know, which is a bar, so. A lot of that's a narrative and that's it.
And we have all the developments that are, that are, have to do with Perry Pike and Lafayette being reviewed all at the same time right now. They have part of it on comments.
I'm going back and looking at Madison Meadows one, two, the, the spot, because they're all in that this area. I'm kind of making sure everything lines. So it's taking the time.
Yeah. I'd say, you got a lot of pieces that you're putting together that.
Over about four years.
Yeah, I mean, when, you know, you just want to make sure that whatever that impact is, is that, I mean, cause they're, they're definitely, and, and, you know, I've talked to the business owners, a couple of business owners there at Perry Pike and 42 and that general area. And, you know, like speaking of Michelle specifically, she's got, the owner there has some very big concerns about the development to the west. Her concern is that, you know, she has enjoyed having easy access in and out. And when, you know, you add the volume of traffic that is being added to a two lane road that's signalized. You know, she said that she's already experienced, you know, traffic that backs up, you know, west of her entrance, which, you know, restricts the easy access out of her, out of her business. So, you know, thinking about the, the traffic study and, and, you know, how do we manage that? Because, you know, like you said, Madison Meadows one, I mean, you know, all these things like pieced together, they didn't generate, you know, that impact, you know, those improvements. But at some point it's gonna, there's gonna be a trigger and I, and I feel like, even if there's not a trigger, there's still a, an obligation for this development to, you know, to, to provide. For, for that, you know, future development or future improvements. Yeah, so and, and, and keep in mind, new developments, there's impact fees, road impact fees, and that's what all those fees are for too. Will go into specific, not just a general fund where just to be used whenever. These, from these developments that are going along that area, those impact fees, which are, which are little amounts, they're pretty big amounts. They will be used specifically for.
Yeah, for instance, for instance, like specific to this one. This is likely over, in, in 10 years, when this is developed and Madison Meadows one and two, and everything's fully developed in the spot, we're probably gonna need a turn lane at Perry Pike and 42. Their traffic study indicates that that's likely. That's not all because of these guys. That's because of all four of them.
A hundred percent.
Madison Meadows one said, we don't need anything at Perry Pike. When they were just down, we didn't need it.
Right.
When Madison Meadows two came in, we still didn't need a turn lane at Perry Pike. But if these guys were the first, we wouldn't need to do a turn lane at Perry Pike. So that's what those impact fees. We're not, we don't need a turn lane today. It opened today, but by 2034, we're in a turn. Yeah, they didn't get, so that's where those impact fees are gonna be set aside, utilized, and it'll be a village project.
Yeah, and I appreciate what you're saying there. And the only thing that I'll say, and it's not to contradict, but I don't want to wait until 2034.
It's, it's.
I know.
I mean, then.
I, I know. But, you know, I, I think that, you know, from a responsible development standpoint, and, and, you know, and when you look around different communities, you have some responsible communities who build it and then they'll come. You know, build a road, build the infrastructure, get that into place, and then everything else kind of builds in. I mean, our neighbor just to the east does a very, very good job of, you know, building the roadways and the infrastructure and then allowing the development to tie in, right? And, you know, sometimes we go completely the opposite way, right? And we let the development come in and we try to figure out, you know, the, the infrastructure after that. And, you know, you can, and I won't say the other communities, but I mean, you can see very clearly that, that our neighbor to, to, to the east does it very well. Another neighbor close doesn't do it that well. And, you know, you're, there's tangible, there's notable differences. And I mean, I, you know, from a, if we're the planning and zoning commission, I mean, you know, these are the things that, you know, we want to be aware of and try to get in front of rather than react to. So Randy, I agree with everything you said. I just don't want to wait until 2034 for them to pay their final impact fees or however. I don't even know how it works. Honestly, I don't even, do you guys know about how our impact fees work?
Yeah.
Oh, I know you do. I'm asking you. I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. But, I mean, as a commission, I don't know. I mean, I, I know that there's impact fees for like the police department. I mean, I get that, but I mean, are you guys aware of the impact fees?
For the completion of the home or when it's building.
And for each, I mean, each type of impact fee?
Is it each property? Is, is, has it whatever?
For parks, for roadways, infrastructure, sewer water.
Okay. Yeah, so I guess I'll just say, you know, I'll plead my ignorance. And I didn't know exactly what impact fees were being assessed and collated. And at, you know, from a timing standpoint, how that gets allocated and whatever. And again, as an example, and, and this is in our community, but Darby Fields, when that project was approved, part of that was there was gonna be a, a roundabout installed at Converse Hough and Plain City Georgetown Road. And that's still planned. It's planned for 2026. The project's been done for two years. So if we needed it, you know, I mean, it, it was planned for the completion of the project, or at least by that time, kind of like what Randy is saying. But now it's still scheduled out, still two years, three years from now. And it, it, it should have been done three years ago when the project was done. So I just want to make sure that we're staying in front of, or at least keeping pace with the, the growth and we're not being 100% reactive, which is, I think, a bad standpoint for us to operate from. So I said my piece.
That's right. No, I agree. It'd be nice to have the turn lane put in before we actually, you know, have the need to turn lane and everybody's backed up for, you know, three miles to make, to get through one car at a time, but.
Yeah, and especially when we have, you know, some of our business owners who, you know, will rely on these communities for, you know, for, for added business, right?
Yes.
But you, you, you don't want to make, you don't want to impact the business so negatively for the few years leading up to the 2034 deadline or, you know, whatever. I know if you threw a number out, it's not excellent stuff.
Well, for our, you know, for our part, we're committed to, you know, continuing to work with the, with the village and, you know, Randy and, you know, what that traffic study recommends and, you know, what we need to do as part of that, so. Yeah, we're, we're on board. You know, our, our, Wilcox's goal is to be a good partner with the village. You know, you never know, another piece of property may come around. They may want to do it again and, and they want to have that good relationship, so.
And I think you've shown that. I mean, you know, you've, you've taken all of our conversations and, and comments and suggestions and you've tried to incorporate. And I, so I mean, I, I believe what you're saying.
Well, I appreciate that. I, I, I mean, with that, I just, I want to say, we, we appreciate everything that everybody's done to kind of help us fine tune this. You know, we, we appreciate the opportunity to, to bring this together. If everybody's happy with it and, and, you know, maybe with the few minor comments we have, we, you know, we'd love to have your confidence and, you know, move this along tonight.
Anybody else have comments? I was just rechecking kind of some of the divergence from the zoning stuff. The only one that, and I get where we are with this property doing, this is more of my, my pet peeve, is, you know, the open space with the ponds and retention is. is, you know, the open space with the ponds and retention is, and I know we need retention ponds and, and all that stuff, but it's like, you know, we do have stuff to fee in lieu of doing that, um, you know, I just get, I don't know, tired of seeing every community come in and, you know, we don't have park space for ball fields and, you know, we're adding in all of, you know, you know, I got kids playing ball, you got kids playing ball, and, you know, we have.
Your, your point is, is that the, the ponds are being calculated as green space, but they're not usable. Is that, is that what you're getting at?
Yeah, and it's, it's kind of like a double edged sword, I think, because, you know, there's not enough acres, you know, to, um, you know, we don't need a million little parks and everything, we need to start figuring out planning to get a nice big park usable.
For the whole community, not just the neighborhood.
Got ten acres right across the street, Madison Meadows two.
Yeah, we need to go ten times that. So we need to find ten more of those.
Yeah. And similar to the road impact fees, our park impact fees are there too, so, we do have that money that could go toward green space. Um, and in these, if you remember, originally they did not have the, the paths, and, and they have kind of turned that, those amenities into.
And, and we did exclude the, the, the two ponds to the south, we did exclude those from the open space calculation, so we're not asking for, we, we understand, those aren't really accessible. You know, those are more utilitarian, they're not really functional open space. But the other, the other ponds are part of that open space fabric, and they do serve kind of a visual and functional amenity as part of that. Um, interesting, I, I was kind of going through your code and, and I was going through the conservation development standards, and if you do conservation development, you can actually, you are allowed to include the ponds, and you're allowed to include twenty-five percent of your right of ways. So it's, it's really kind of, and I know you guys are, I know you guys are working through revising your code, that's probably something that you'll want to take a look at, but, yeah. But, I mean, but I think it is part of that purpose that, you know, ponds in, in a lot of cases are an amenity, you know, they have fountains and, you know, if you can, you know, walk around them, uh, you know.
Yeah.
Tapping geese.
Yeah. Walking dog.
Particular parking, you have here patio homes, not necessarily being family, with lots of kids.
Right.
Right.
You're gonna want to take advantage of the open space that's on site.
Yeah, and, 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 you know, it, it's more of a gripe of the code, not necessarily this property, because I mean, it's, like you said, your, your target demographic's really not, you know, minus probably a single family, but most of everything else is not really,
Right.
you know, needing, you know, soccer fields and baseball fields out there.
That's an important question.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely.
Every time I go swimming in them though, Tom shows up. Lights flashing.
Now, I guess, and sort of with the open space more in the middle, and, you know, is that going to be more kept up?
Yeah.
You know, kind of mode, so like that whole area?
Yeah, the, the open space in the center, uh, will primarily be kind of an open mode maintained, uh, open space. So, I mean, there is open field there for, you know, kind of open play for kids, if they want to go out there and kick a soccer ball. It's not, you know, it's not going to be a striped out soccer field, but there's, it's a, it's actually a pretty large area. We, just the area of the houses that we took out alone, that's kind of deceiving at this scale, but that's four acres.
Yeah, I'd say it looks like, I mean, it's definitely a big chunk, so I mean, it looks like a nice big area.
It's, it's a very large area.
The, the way the path is shown there, that can be when it comes back in for the bottom of the lot.
Yeah, I mean, we.
Whenever, whoever you're going to sell in this, whoever buys this, their general family might come in and say, hey, we want to put a little park in there.
But it's possible, I mean, you may, you may end up with a, a single family buyer that says, hey, we, we want to go ahead and put a playground, you know, in here for the community. Um, we, we actually wrote into the text that that was a possibility. We, we didn't want to define that for the potential buyer, but we left that as a, as a, you know, an, a, an acceptable accessory use for those, uh, open space areas.
Yeah, I, I know, just as a parent with stuff, I would encourage it, because, you know, at least from our neighborhood, the elementary school's really the only, that's the park everybody goes to, there's no, like, really in the existing neighborhoods. Well, the park that we have, we already talked about, that we have the unincorporated area that we can't get a sidewalk to connect Plain City to get to the, uh, the playground equipment, so.
And, and speaking of, and I was just, you know, as we're talking, I keep looking at this map. Um, so the, you know, the part of the development that is, or the part of this property that's not in your development, so basically the, 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 uh, party that's selling the land to you, his, his house, his homestead is right in the middle of that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is there a way, and I don't know that there's a way, and I would probably use the wrong terminology, but I've used easement, but can we create, um, that walking path from your southernmost point to the north side? And basically go across, uh, your, you know, the seller's property, the, the frontage on, um, on Lafayette Plain City Road, so that we don't have those, you know, kind of islands where you walk from, um.
So are you saying, Tom?
North to south, yeah, right, yeah.
Didn't, didn't you guys have right of way?
Yeah, we did.
And that's why I was going to ask you about the other, that little spot next to the gas station, I mean, we own the right of way there, right? So we technically could do a sidewalk in front of that county property. Okay, that's fine.
We can do it here.
Now, and, and when we say we, I mean them. Um, I, I, and I, you know, I had to throw the curveball in here on, in, in the, in the bottom of the ninth inning here, but, um, it, I, you know, just looking at this, it's like, it seems necessary to create that connector, I mean, again, you've got that little stub of a walking path that kind of goes to nowhere.
Right.
That property may stay, uh, the, the homestead, the farm, I mean, that could stay for the next fifty or a hundred years, right? And there's nothing there, I mean, like, once we're done, and once we've approved, and it, you know, becomes a village issue. And, you know, I, I would, you know, maybe like to see a way to connect those paths, you know, through the right of way, um, create that, um, you know, that walking path, um, and again, I don't know the mechanism to do it, but, um, i- is, is that something that the?
I don't want to speak for Jonathan, who's not here, he's had the conversation, but I'm pretty sure, uh, Detroit has said, I'll study everything else, but you're not touching my main apartment. So, I think we'd have a hard time forcing them to do that at this, at this stage.
Well, yeah, there's. Yeah, there's probably not a right way to get. So, in order to get it, they would have to get the authorities to it for you to.
Give up right of way. So we, so I, I'm not even asking you to buy their property, but can we buy, or can we, you know, again, just an easement, can he, can he give an easement to your development that allows you to put the walking path in to create that connection?
I just, I don't think he's gonna, I don't want to speak on his behalf, but, and it always said that this is my, I want to stay, I don't want to touch it here on here. There ain't actually any of this village.
What if it's a deal breaker for the Planning and Zoning Commission?
There'd be bad news for us, but I don't want that to hurt us too much to help. Just to be honest. I think it'd be a challenge to do.
I, I guess, and, and I don't know if this will get to it, but with the engineering or the traffic studies, I mean, that, that road's gonna have to, is there enough, I guess, right of way each side for that road to be improved? Because I mean, it's a pretty narrow two-lane country road right now.
The, you know, improvements that we were in the TIS are at, actually at Lafayette Plain City Road and Perry Pike. Are those the improvements that are going to be required, so that's up to the board. They do not need a turn lane into the site. For this access. I think there may be a need of a right, the southern right lane into the north entry.
Okay.
But that's pretty far away.
That's, that's on your frontage, so.
Yeah.
Right of way would be. How, how much room do we have in that easement? In front of the Troyer property, what's the?
I think it's, I think it's probably just one five foot center line.
Or the center line, so we probably only got like.
You got eight.
You got ten, twelve feet, but there's a ditch in there. Right.
If there's a path on the other side of Lafayette, could we provide pedestrian crossing to get a, to provide that connectivity and not force Troyer to do something illegal?
Well, I mean, so, yeah, I, I, I mean, and again, I appreciate you looking at options, I mean, like, my, you know, concern there, number one, is you're, you're, you're in an area that, that, literally the speed limit's fifty-five miles an hour. Um, and then as you, um, are going up that road, there's a slight curve or bend in that road. Um, and it's basically right at, you know, where you're proposing the, the crossover. Um, so like, if you're going southbound and you pass the Troyer's property, um, there's that, you know, slight bend in the road, and even though it looks real slight on this when you're driving down the road, there's definitely a sight line issue, so what I'm saying is, if you're crossing the road, um, especially if there's southbound traffic, there could, you know, certainly be.
We're gonna provide that cross, uh, pedestrian crossing at our north entry that connects them to the south, the walking path that's on the east end road. And gets them there. I mean, just, we're gonna have a real hard time forcing the Troyers to do something on their farm that's not our property, and it's requiring part of help.
I would rather focus on the pedestrian, I, I understand what you're saying, but focus on the pedestrian access at the main entrance.
And we'll, we'll own both sides of that street now, right, so we could take the speed limit there, right? I mean, I know it's just.
We should.
I wouldn't say we should.
Yeah.
Yes. Well, how about we, how about, well. But, but honestly, you're gonna be in an unincorporated, there's gonna be that section that's an unincorporated area, is it, uh, you know, I mean, they, is it Troyer's property?
No, they're annexed, it is.
That's me, they're annexed, they are annexed. They are annexed, yeah, we'll have both sides all the way through there.
Okay, yep.
We put a tunnel under it.
Yeah, so, but, but then if you're approaching from the south to the north, um, it's definitely gonna be fifty-five, and you hit, uh, you know, uh, immediately a thirty-five mile an hour center, or whatever that ends up being.
Then they can walk through our nice parts of our property.
Walk what?
They can walk through the nice parts of our property if you're around the turn.
Yep.
Hey, I don't want to speak to the Troyers, but I think that would be a very tough thing to get done, unfortunately.
I don't have any other questions or comments.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the, the dream would be to have the connection go all the way through, I mean, but obviously, probably it's not gonna.
If they do so, and then if somebody wants to develop, then you can require it as part of the cross development.
Yeah, but if they don't, for the next fifty years or a hundred years, and we're gonna be stuck like we are on, or Chillicothe Street, uh, for that last development, um, that we just talked about, so. But I, I mean, I appreciate, I understand that, but, you know, you at least want to throw it out and see, and, uh, I mean, I, to me, it's a, a little bit.
So, so I guess maybe, I, I'm just kind of wondering then, you know, as you kind of work, because, you know, if we're gonna try to force everybody based on that north entrance, it's the path crossing, is, i- if there's a way to loop, you know, the path to kind of flow, flow that direction, you know, I don't know if there's a way.
You know, if you have kind of a, a path here, you know, if there's a way to loop something and connect that way, you know, just maybe shift, shift this connection a little bit to the door, so that way as people on the path goes out, has to flow that way, if that.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah, we could absolutely do that. And I, you know, I mean, I, I definitely understand where you're coming from, Tom, but this is kind of the conundrum all the time with paths, is, you know, we're always stuck in this mode of build it as you go, and you only can control what you can control, I mean, it's no different than what we have to the north. I mean, the, the path going north doesn't go anywhere, it ends at the church. Ideally, it would extend across to the church and, you know, continue on, but, um, that is, you know, at somebody else's, it's somebody else's property and, and, and we don't have that under our control. But we can certainly, we can certainly do what you're suggesting, Tyler, and, uh, you know, we can make that, we could do exactly what we were talking about with, you know, making some of these other connections, is just to make a connection, you know, of this, you know, maybe, you know, right down there.
That, and that may just help that natural flow or go up that direction and.
Yep, I think that, I think that's easily doable.
And I guess with that, you know, if we're gonna have a pedestrian one, we'll just throw it on the engineering side, you know, the nice little flashing yellow lights to highlight the.
That's what, if, if we end up doing a pedestrian crossing at that main entrance, um, we'll have to, we'll want to look at that, probably include that in the study. Because it's gonna be, it's not a signalized intersection.
Yeah.
So, how do we want to do that against a better, just to be clear?
You know, I think, yeah, I think at the very least. But I, I think at the very least you do, you, you, we would want to, you know, and we can look at this as we go through the final development plan where the details of that are, but you can have a, you know, just a, a push button beacon there, so that when you're there to cross the road, you're pushing it, the lights are flashing, uh, you know, you've got a crosswalk there. Uh, and so that not only serves to notify the drivers, but it also kind of serves to remind the pedestrians that they are crossing a major street, and that they need to be careful and signal drivers and everything as they're doing it. So that's what I would suggest that we do, as we, as we go through those final details, is make sure that we incorporate that, um, you know, as a detail in the final plans.
Yeah. What's that, that, his duty?
Yeah, the police department has special duty.
Um, so with that, um, I would make a motion to approve, uh, PUD dash twenty-three dash three, the preliminary development plan.
With our suggestions.
Yes. See, look at you.
I'll second that.
And Mr. Adler?
Yes.
Mr. Harriman?
Yes.
Mr. Jesswitz?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carty?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you folks, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
We appreciate the process, we're gonna be working on it, and appreciate everybody's help.
Yeah, no, thanks for, you know, kind of listening, tweaking this stuff up, appreciate it.
All right, discussion ends.
Uh, there's no discussion.
Uh, I think the discussion, Mr. President, we talked about was, uh, possible, I'll say, committee work session, adding an extra meeting. Um, and at one point we sent a, a message out May first-ish, somewhere in there. I, anyways, I'll, I think that's where we're gonna discuss it, is extra meeting.
So.
I'm the holdup on it.
He's the holdup.
Get me into here too, to get back to him.
And if you can do it though, it's gonna be in the afternoon, but then that kicks you out, right? So it'll hold it all in the evening.
Afternoon, I think.
Well, I'm sorry, at evening.
Oh, yeah.
Evening would kick you out.
So you can't do the evening, Tom?
I can do the evening now, on the first.
Okay, so.
And if I could do it, it would only be the evening, so I think that says not on the first.
Yeah, are you up the following week?
Wait, no, I could do the evening on the first, I'm sorry. Softballs. I'll just have my sidekick with me again.
Uh, he's gonna be part of the discussion.
He really is.
Yeah.
He's playing his piano back there.
I'd say my, my sidekick's fourteen, so we.
I saw him walking out with your car keys. I saw him walking out with your car keys.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, he's scum.
Yeah, I, I could do literally the afternoon on the first, but not the evening, but the three of you and maybe Mr. Slayning, I don't know if he responded.
Yeah, he's, he's out of town.
So you've maybe got the three of you.
I mean, I could do, you said you're available on the evening of the first? So we're kind of waiting, we don't know about your evening schedule at this point, correct?
I don't, we should probably look at another day though, so we can try to include you guys in it too.
So I could do eve, I could do probably morning, or afternoon or evening.
And the purpose of this is for Virginia Homes, bringing in, uh, another concept after our last meeting, prior to coming, they don't want to come in with a preliminary yet, because they want to go over the changes they've made to this, the most recent, uh, most recent, or I guess this would be their second revision, um, to the concept, so, um, that will be the primary, um, focus, and I would like to get some code discussion, you know, covered in that, in that special meeting too, so.
Well, as far as, uh, Nietzsche, I mean, if, if we can accommodate on the first, I don't, I don't know what availability you have, but maybe just come to the next scheduled meeting, right?
They, they can, yeah, I would just, I would like to keep it focused, just as a discussion item. Um, our next meeting, we have as of right now, as of right now, we only have, we might only have two, two items at that meeting.
Yeah, what if we just did both of those during that meeting? Um, Virginia Homes and.
Would we, how about zoning code discussion stuff on the first? Are we anywhere near kind of going through that, with that?
Yeah, if we went through that, we'd be.
Did that on the first, maybe to at least not get everybody, but get kind of, I guess, three fifths?
And that's only if he's available.
But if, you could do the afternoon, correct, on the first? But if, you could do the afternoon, correct, on the first?
I can. Yeah.
If you did the afternoon, so we can shift.
I'll do the day, do the, the day like two to four, somewhere in there.
If, if that would be acceptable with you. I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to think of if we can utilize the time to at least.
So we do like.
Like focus on one thing, maybe get.
Like two to, two to eight.
Yeah. What, we'll go, we'll do.
All these are max two to four. You can stay as late as you want.
Yeah, you guys could tag team it, you know, we'll go, you know, get the first half.
Oh, yeah.
We'll do a lunch break.
Tag out and then come on in. Yeah. Okay. So, uh, so if you want to say tendably, then May first, two o'clock for zoning code discussion only.
I can confirm it two o'clock on May first. It won't be here.
You won't be here.
Where I'll be, I couldn't tell you, but it won't be here.
Two to three fifteen.
Yeah. Um, and then, cause on the 17th, they would have had to already, well, no, I don't say. Even if the, if we went, if we did the Virginia Homes overview on the first, they wouldn't have enough time to turn around for the 17th anyway. But if we meet with them on the 17th, if they come in on the 17th. Okay.
Yeah. The only other option is if, if we do it next week, but it's, I've got DRB next week. We've got council next week. We've, we've kind of already got a busy schedule next week. So Monday, the first, I mean, it works. We'd at least get, get some, uh, get this draft closer to the draft form for PUD.
Yeah, I think.
That we'll do is just whatever we discuss then, I'll get the minutes and the notes and I'll just send out to the, the entire board the next day. So everyone has those right away that they can review at their own time. We could get close to getting that, that wrapped up.
Cause yeah, I mean, just, I'm just thinking the code stuff. Even if we get it where we want, then we still have to put it out 30 day public notice. And then, and then we would prove, then it'd have to go to council with a, a 30 day public notice.
Yes. So my goal would be to take the draft, cause OHM like is not going to have our comments incorporated into their draft that they just come up with. So would, to be get our comments kind of set and then send those to H, H, uh, OHM so they could get us something back as soon as possible. Yeah. I think our extension with them, that, that clock is ticking to an end. So whatever they don't get done from that, that will, that will, that'll fall in my hands as far as getting those drafts and, and codes written. So I'd like to utilize it as much as we can as far as the little, little time we have left.
Okay. All right. So tendably right now, I guess we're going to plan May first at 2:00 PM. With I guess the three of us here.
I'll be here. I'll be here in spirit.
No, in spirit. Thank you. You can, you can just click on the YouTube and watch, right?
Maybe, maybe you'll have a snow day. You'll be here.
No.
All right. Uh, so May first, we'll plan 2:00 PM for a, for the work session for zoning code discussion. And then we'll have our next, uh, uh, meeting with the, the 17th.
Yep.
So it sounds like then Virginia Homes may come in with their.
Yeah, that would be.
More of a discussion item at, at that point. A- any other big one? I know you said there's, is one or two things. Any other big things on that 17th one that you see?
No. Um, as far as, uh, we, we may see, um, if, if they can get it done in time, we may see the, um, we'll have the rezoning of the spot. We will have that here that has been, uh, been submitted. We won't see a preliminary, they may potentially have a concept at that time or another concept for us to discuss, but I think it's going to be just a rezoning only for that one. No, I'm pulling a blank. Um, there, we do have another submitter, but it's not a development.
All right. Guess with that, motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I slotted until 10:30, 11 o'clock. We could stay here all the night.
I really thought we were going to, um, to.
We need a second for the head segment? Okay.
Approved.
Yes, yes, yes.
Did you have a recent?
No, I thought you were going to, um, finish before, uh, for sound finding. And so I was like, oh, I think you're.